All right, so now being 5:45, I'll call the June 6 meeting of the Plimpton Board of Selectmen to Order. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, this meeting will be conducted via remote means. Members of the public who wish to access the meeting may join the Zoom meeting via your computer, audio, or both. The login information was on our agenda. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we're unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post on the town's website, town.plimpton.us, an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend the meeting can also be found on the Town of Plimpton's website. And this video is not to be considered the official public record, that is, the meeting minutes. All right, so we were going to take things out of order. Jonathan had a pretty tight schedule today. So we were going to start with Borrego before we go back to the Carver redevelopment project. So I see Zach is with us. I'm not sure. I think Jonathan is with us as well. So I'll kind of give the opener for this. Based on our last meeting, we were in discussions with Zach from Borrego with the assistance of Jonathan from council. And we have made a lot of progress in a very short period of time. And Zach wanted to, I think Zach, you wanted to make a presentation to us first?
No, I don't need to. I'm certainly here to answer any questions, but I actually reviewed the memo that I put together for the board dated back in January. And as I stated in a previous email, nothing's changed. So that was pretty comprehensive in my mind, but I'm here to answer any and all questions.
Beautiful. Okay, thank you, Zach, very much. All right, Jonathan, did you have anything that you wanted to add before we just get into it?
Thanks. No, I don't. The one, I guess, the one thing driving out here I was thinking about is there is still a provision in the agreement, which was an original term talking about that the town will enter into a pilot agreement. And I know that's been kind of pushed to a side to be considered by the Board of Assessors. Borrego has offered to enter into a pilot, but it said they don't necessarily have to or want to. And since the town's position seems to be in limbo at this point, I'm not sure that that should be retained in the agreement. The town can still enter into a pilot, but I think for accuracy purposes, right now it says the town will enter into a pilot, and I think that's not correct at this point.
Okay, but that is not, that's not in the motion that we're going to be talking about tonight?
Yeah, it's actually in the amendment.
But not in the motion?
No, but the motion refers to the amendment, that's why.
Okay, so should we just say that, I mean, the agreement is still pending some fine tuning?
Yeah, you, I mean, you can say that. I mean, I guess, I mean, I don't know what's happened with, you know, with respect to the Board of Assessors as to the pilot. And maybe Zach knows something about that, whether that can be determined with finality tonight, or whether you want to leave it open, but you could go ahead.
Jonathan, could we put something that says that the town may elect to enter into a pilot agreement?
Yeah, I think that's fine. I don't have the text with me, but I think if you put in the agreement, something like the town will consider, as opposed to the town will or has, it'd be fine.
Zach, are you okay if we, if the board votes tonight pending that last change?
Yeah, that's no problem. The full context for the board and anyone listening is the original consideration for the amendment was an upfront pilot. I'm still perfectly willing to do both, but since we've kind of adjusted the provision, or excuse me, the consideration to a perpetual easement or conservation restriction over the land, I think either suggestion of may or will consider, or whatever word you guys would like to use, but Jonathan's characteristic of me certainly being willing to enter into a pilot, but not needing to enter into a pilot is accurate.
Yeah, okay. So Liz, do you want to tweak the motion?
I think we can make the motion as was prepared, and then I would just say with the additional note that the agreement language will be modified to reflect that the town may do it.
Okay, all right, so just to give Mark and John some background, like I alluded to, Zach and Jonathan, Liz and I, and their counsel and Jeff Smith have been having powwows since our last meeting to try to figure out a way that it would work so that in the event the town were to approve the amending the agreement to allow the solar on the property that there is going to be 60 acres that would be in a conservation restriction state because of the solar, but that we were able to come to an agreement that the remaining 115 acres would also remain in a a state of either agriculture, conservation, or recreation, passive recreation in perpetuity. So in essence, about 175 acres of this parcel would be in agricultural and some type of conservation restriction in perpetuity. So I felt much better about the the solar, once we were able to do this, I thought that was really great working with Zach to try to make this happen and Jonathan, that I feel that that the spirit of the agreement, the original settlement, and now making sure that we have this really kind of ironclad, it gives me a much better feeling about the property and allowing the solar to be installed. So John and Mark, did you have anything you wanted to say about the project that we discussed last week and then the developments?
The only thing I'll say is I appreciate all the additional work and all the hard effort, and I'm pretty excited about the outcome. Very excited.
The, what you outlined as far as the land in perpetuity, perpetuity, is that in the motion?
It doesn't lay out specifically the amount of land. We, there is an agreement, actually, it's the amendment to the settlement agreement that will accompany this. I believe that we had in that agreement language that a lot of this has to be squared away by the time a building permit is issued with this project. So there's some title work that would need to be done and some other things that would need to come together. And all of that would need to be done before a building permit would be issued for this project.
Okay, and you're confident we can do that?
I'm very confident that we can do that.
I have no questions then.
All right, so Mark or John, you've got no questions? Bear with me just a second here. Too many darned screens open here. I apologize. Darn it all. Where did that go?
Maybe Liz has it?
Yeah, Liz, do you? I had the motion and I had not got too many screens open and I can't find the darn thing.
Read it and then you can just.
Here we go. I found it. All right. Thank you, Liz. All right, so I make a motion to approve and endorse in the form submitted an amendment to the Agreement for Judgment dated September 26, 2002, and a settlement agreement fully executed February 11, 2017, concerning property on Upland Road presently owned by Crescent Moon Cranberry LLC for the purpose of allowing the installation of a commercial solar facility on a certain portion of the 225 acres of land restricted from development by paragraph 8 of the Agreement for Judgment, and as consideration therefore to place 202 acres of that land under a recorded restriction preserving its use in perpetuity for agriculture, conservation, and/or passive recreation purposes. So we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that. Did you want to add the bit about?
Oh, thank you. And that the town will consider a pilot agreement for the solar facility. Thank you, Mark, very much.
So a second.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right, now I can close all my other screens.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Zach. Thank you for working through this with us. I think this is a really, it's a win-win for both of us, and I could not be happier to have this permanent restriction on this property, just to know that regardless of what happens in the future, that the property will be maintained in its current state or a state of conservation. So thank you for your help with that.
Have a great evening, everyone. Thank you.
You too. Thank you, Jonathan. I appreciate all your help.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next on the agenda is an update on North Carver redevelopment project. Liz, did you want to take the lead on this one?
Sure. So we've been communicating back and forth with officials from Carver. We've heard from a few of our residents over the last couple of weeks. I think where we're at now, the main trucking company for the project knows that they should not be utilizing the Plimpton portion of Montello for heavy truck traffic. They have had a few instances where drivers who might not work all the time kind of missed the memo from their dispatch facility that they're not supposed to be on that roadway. At one point in time last week, Carver had offered to put one of their officers on the Plimpton side, but then that stopped. So we're going to get our people back out there. Our signage is going to be re-instituted, and we're also going to put up a barrel in the roadway, making it so that really only residential-type vehicles would be able to get down there. And we'll work on having some of our police officers down there at the entrance during the construction hours, so that if any trucks do come down and try to access from there, they are told that they need to turn around. So that's really where we're at with this. I think we had all hoped that it would be an easier fix, but it seems like for whatever reason, we go a few days where things get better and then they start with the truck traffic again. So that's what's happening as far as that's concerned. We're going to need a much more active police presence on our end, on the Plimpton end. I don't think we want to leave it to Carver. And then beyond that, their highway director has agreed to meet with our highway superintendent in the upcoming weeks to talk about what they might be able to do for us financially to fix the portions of roadway there that were disturbed again after our highway department had migrated it a few weeks back. So they are willing to help in that regard. I think the biggest issue right now for us is the truck traffic and making sure that they stay off of there. And then going forward, big-picture-wise, aside from all the trucks, I think we need to figure out for the money that was appropriated at special town meeting to work on getting a consultant on board to look at kind of big-picture impacts potentially from the project. I think we need to identify how we want to work that and getting a consultant on board and basically next steps for that. So I'm not sure if maybe Mark has some ideas about that.
Only that I think this needs work and we need to clarify it and sort of sort out the flow of information, the flow of information between Carver and us and information between ourselves. I am going to be in contact with Peter Newton, who has worked with us in the past, a hydro engineer, to see if he has any ideas and whether he could be helpful as a consultant and/or who else he might recommend when we get to the place that we need a consultant. My particular concern certainly is the traffic concern, the light concern, but I think the potentially really severe consequence could be stormwater runoff and problems with nearby wells. And I think particularly that's the piece that we need to concentrate on in the long run, and hopefully in the next couple of weeks, I can get a little more information from Peter and better understand how we might move forward on that piece.
Could we, so I put inside the chat for this, I don't know if everybody can see it or not, but I put the email address for the Selectmen's office. Some of the residents, I know there are quite a few on the call, some have been more active than others as far as reaching out to us, but if anyone who wants periodic updates, maybe in between meetings, we could keep people apprised. If you could send an email to that address that I put in the chat, it's BOS Assistant, BOS stands for Board of Selectmen, If you want your email added to almost like an update list, I thought that that might be an effective way of getting some info out to the residents, in particular, the ones who reside over there, rather than solely relying on social media or counting on people necessarily checking the Selectmen's agenda to see when we're going to be talking about this. So if you want your name and email address added, we can email updates as they become available. I think that this project is going to be a marathon and not a sprint, so setting up a good communication chain now, I think, would be beneficial to everybody as we move forward.
There are two meetings for the RDA that have been posted for this month, so I'll plan on attending those meetings and then I can report back. And I'll speak with them about what's happening up here with the trucks as well, so that they're aware of it and see if there's anything that they can do to assist and make this right. So I'll have, I should have more than to report back to you, Liz, that you would be able to get out to everyone. We do have another meeting on the 27th, and that would give me two meetings to provide updates on for our next meeting. So I'll do that. Any questions or anything that we can assist with? Anybody got a hand up? Okay. I can't, from Melissa and Rick, they can't see the emails. Okay, but they do want to be added and they provided our information, so we'll take care of that. So if you want to be listed or included on that mail list for updates as we get them on the RDA, shoot an email off to Bree and we can certainly take care of that for you. All right.
It looks like Kathleen Cohen, they have their hand up.
Hi Kathy, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, Steve does.
Okay, hi Steve.
Hey, how are you?
Whatever you.
They were, today there were trucks, there were trucks using the road. And as I was, I happened to notice it, so I stopped. And so one of the trucks just went around me, but then I backed up and stopped the next truck. And the guy told, I said, you know, you guys aren't supposed to be using this road. And he said, oh, he said, you know, and he admitted he saw the, well, there's like a painted sign. And I said, well, there's a regular sign that's been in the ground all these years. And he said, he said that they were instructed by their supervisor to use that road. So I ended up calling up the Plimpton Police Station, and I think the officer I talked with might be Bauer, Officer Bauer.
Brower, Kevin Brower.
And so I told him, and he said, well, you know, that they've been working on trying to resolve this. And I'm like, well, I said, I mean, you know, do they get a fine if they do it, or, you know, why can't we put a barricade up? Yep, I did.
No, you didn't say how many.
Well, there were two trucks that I saw, you know, when I was, you know, coming home. And, you know, so, you know, I don't understand, myself, like I said, I don't understand. He said, oh, we only have one police car. And I'm like, okay, well, you know, what does that have to do with it? I mean, the trucks are, you know, continually, they obviously don't listen, and they don't really care if they're being told by their supervisor to, just to keep using the road.
Yeah, it seems like we have good days and bad days where they say they're going to take care of it and they've told everybody. And then we have a day, I think, like Thursday, and then again today, where they're telling them to use the road. So we'll try to get this squared away, and we are working on getting council on board to assist us with this so that we're certain that we're within our legal rights, but we're doing what we can in the meantime to curtail the truck traffic from driving down your road. They need to access it from their own side, and then there's also detour signs that need to come down as well, because there's signs that are sending people down your road as a detour and that are in Carver, and those signs need to come down. So I'll discuss that with the RDA, too.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Bob, you've got your hand up?
Yeah, I was curious as to, because Liz was talking about putting up barriers that residential vehicles only could get through. Where were you thinking of placing those barriers? And the reason why I ask, I live on Heather's Path, and I have a 35-foot motorhome that I tow my car behind so that I need access out Montello, so I would need something bigger than what an SUV needs to get through, so.
We can make sure, it would just be a barrel or possibly a sawhorse, like nothing, nothing large or permanent or semi-permanent, just something to kind of get the memo to the trucks.
Drive, I could move it, drive through, get out, put it back, kind of thing.
Correct. And we're also, I'm actually going to communicate with our police chief as soon as this meeting is done and find out whoever's working on our day shift. I think that they're going to need to use the top of that street as kind of home base for the next few days so that there's physical police presence out there from Plimpton, not relying on Carver to provide that so that they can flag these drivers down and tell them, no, you can't access from here. And, you know, while it's appreciated that some of our residents are trying to do that, I don't, I wouldn't want anybody to get hurt or have anything like that happen. So I think having police presence down there is what we need to do. It's unfortunate that all of our calls to them and to the trucking company, you know, that we didn't make more progress than this, but I think we need to start physically making it difficult for them to access by that way.
Liz, that makes total sense and increased police presence. I would just note that as we talk to Carver officials, I mean, this is one more expense for a little tiny town that we shouldn't have to be taking care of. And it looks like we need to do that for the moment, but I think we need to keep documenting and keep hounding them as to the consequence for us that really should be their consequence.
Mark, to kind of segue on what you just said, I would suggest that we monitor these calls or keep track of these calls so that we can seek reimbursement from Carver or the development for the cost of us providing this police service to, so that the road is used by appropriate vehicles. Did anyone else have something they wanted to add? All right, so we'll continue to follow this. I apologize for these trucks heading down the road, but we'll do what we can to try to tighten this up between speaking with the officials and a police presence. And Liz, do you want people to continue to call the police department when these vehicles go down the road, or do you have a different suggestion?
I think that's fine and not, you know, certainly we need to know if the problem's continuing or not so that we can adjust our reaction to the situation accordingly. But that said, if people also had a minute of time and they wanted to call the Town of Carver, there's certainly no objections to that. I think that they should be aware that there's an issue. You know, so if you're, if you're calling us to let us know, I still think that that's helpful to call the police department and say, hey, a big truck just went down. But that said, if you also wouldn't mind calling the Carver Police Department, I think that would be good. I have a feeling if they start getting some phone calls, it might prompt more of a reaction on their part. You know, but we'll certainly do whatever we can. I have a call with our police chief as soon as we, as soon as we get off of here. So we're going to step up our presence out there. It's just unfortunate. And we're getting to a good understanding with them. Our police chief personally talked to the trucking company and to the Carver police chief about the situation, and everyone seemed to understand. And, no, it's frustrating to say the least, but I think we need to react accordingly and just assume that they are not going to do anything on our behalf. So it needs to be our manpower and us driving the bus on this.
Yeah, agreed. Anyone that's on the call, or if you have neighbors that wanted to put an email to me documenting these as well, I can get these to the, your emails to the RDA. So if you wanted to put something in writing that documents the days and times that the vehicles were down there, I'd be happy to take those, too, and get those to Sharon Clark, who's the chair of the RDA. So that's an option as well. And my email, Liz, did you want to put my email in the chat for anybody that didn't have it? I think most of you already have it. But if you don't, feel free to do that, and I will pass the message along. All right, so I don't think, yes?
I have a file started on this with all the complaints in it.
Do you have, do you have a scanner, Bree?
I can always scan and then forward everything to you.
Yes, if you could scan them in and board them to me, that would be fantastic. And then I'll take them with me to the next RDA meeting. Beautiful, thank you very much. All right, so more to come. We'll stay on top of this and feel free to email me, call the police, and just keep doing what you're doing, and we'll work together to get this situation hopefully squared away as quickly as possible. Thank you, and thanks for being on the call. All right, so next item on the agenda is a letter regarding the Town of Hanson regionalization opportunity. So Jason, did you want to speak to us about this, or I think we received the letter?
I did. I just wanted to provide you with some background information about why this is even coming across your table at this point. So just to state the record, I'm not going to take a position about the overture at this point as a resident of Plimpton or as a member of the Silver Lake Regional School Committee, but I do have some background on this. This started after a much-delayed look at the Whitman-Hanson Regional Agreement during the 2016-2017 school year. And during that look at the regional agreement, questions arose about their formulation for calculating assessments. And it turns out that Whitman-Hanson Regional Schools had been inappropriately using And it turns out that Whitman Hansen Regional Schools had been inappropriately using a modified alternative assessment formula to calculate the two towns' responsibilities financially to the region. Um, they had to end up applying the statutory method as prescribed in MGL Chapter Seventy, Section Six. And when they did that, there was a substantial swing just in that one fiscal year. It was about four hundred thousand dollars each way. Almost a million dollar difference on paper. Uh, this prompted Hanson to look at their alternatives, including taking a hard look at de-regionalization back in two thousand nineteen. Um, Hanson even went so far to hire consultants to, um, lead up a feasibility study about de-regionalizing Whitman Hansen. In January twenty-fifth of this year, uh, the Hanson Board of Selectmen meeting, the consultant presented them with three possibilities. They could fully separate, um, they could go back to what they used to have, what was a supervisory union for their K to eight schools. So each town would have their own elementary, middle schools and they would still keep the region for nine to twelve or maintain the status quo. And one of the points that was brought up that de-regionalizing would cost Hanson taxpayers significantly, while also jeopardizing offerings it could provide for its students. Um, capital debt that's incurred while you're part of a region is not forgiven. There's also the loss of regional transportation reimbursement for regional schools. Uh, they would need to have separate administrative teams, additional staff would have to be hired. And the possibility of having to build a new school, never mind the potential protracted litigations that could occur. Um, when Pembroke broke away from Silver Lake, we went through ten years of litigation. Um, so the soonest this could happen for the Whitman Hansen Regional Schools, if they do decide to split, would be by twenty twenty-five. And this would be pending votes at the school committee, town meetings and approval from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So the only way this affects Silver Lake and Plimpton is if Hanson pursues the full separation option. And if all three towns of Silver Lake agree to take them off, which we don't even know if that's exactly where they're going to go. But this is why you received a letter, um, from the Board of Selectmen from Hanson, wanting to talk about the potential of joining Silver Lake. And I just wanted you to have some of that background. And I did type that up and can submit it to Liz so you can go over it at your leisure.
Any questions for Jason? I can share that, um,
I guess I have a question.
Okay. Go ahead, John.
Uh, I have a question, Jason. So there is a meeting set up, I believe, for the towns.
Correct.
And you're meeting with them?
They actually reached out to you, the Plimpton Board of Selectmen, and they did reach out to the Silver Lake Regional School Committee as well. Uh, because this would take a pretty monumental effort on behalf of the three towns to amend our regional agreement in order to accommodate, um, Hanson if they choose to try and pursue this. Um, so I think they're laying groundwork just to see what their options are at this point.
My initial reaction was it would, as a small town, it would just dilute our ability to sway whatever came along. But I don't know enough about it to be able to talk intelligently.
And, and Jason, just to clarify, um, it would require all three towns to, to actually agree to amend. It's not something like it happens with the budget where if two towns voted. So all three towns would need to, to be in agreement that we would amend the agreement and add another town to the region.
Yeah, this is where it has to be unanimous vote of all parties. It's not a two-thirds. It's not a majority. It's a unanimous consent of all parties.
And Jason, that's to leave between Whitman and Hanson as well. I think both the towns have to agree.
Exactly. Which is where you could potentially see litigation ensue if, um, Hanson tries to separate from Whitman in a unilateral fashion. So there, there's a lot of work to be done on their end before we really should invest too much time or thought into this process. I just wanted to make sure you knew what was going on in their neck of the woods before they came and spoke to us in our neck of the woods.
So they're just looking to, are they looking to test the waters? Is that really what they're trying to do here?
That, that's the sense I got from their initial overture, the letter that they sent to the towns.
Jason, do you know what, um, their student population is this year?
I don't know what their student population is offhand. I know they have, um, relatively the same size as Halifax. So a- as John was saying, well, between Kingston, Halifax, and if we ever even considered Hanson, um, it would take Plimpton's numbers down to about three and a half percent of the population of Silver Lake.
So then what would your vote be worth at tenth?
Maybe, yeah.
He's, he's just hitting, um, a source of, uh, contention. Uh, Lucas and I, who are the representatives for Plimpton, for Silver Lake, um, essentially we get half a vote each as it is right now. And the reason they have two of us is because they can't have a meeting without a member of Plimpton there. So they want to keep two of us in case one of us can't make it. So we're essentially half a vote each at this point. So yes, it would dilute that voting total. We'd have to go back and reallocate the votes.
And i- is there any sense whether we could even accommodate them, um, space-wise?
We haven't taken any time to do any real feasibility studies on our part. We're going to let them do the heavy lifting at this point. And, and just listen and hear what they have to say.
All right.
Christine, I think it's safe to say that there is, I don't think there is really space anywhere in the district such that we would say that we have lots of extra space in, in any of the schools cross district. I mean, we can, we'd have to do a study to determine what that would actually look like. But the high school doesn't have empty rooms going unused. Neither does the middle school. Neither do the elementary schools.
Thanks, John. That was my sense too, was that we really didn't have the existing space. And, um, yeah, I'm sure an override for this would, um, go over like, um, a lead balloon. So, um, okay. Well, the meeting is, um, I believe, tentatively scheduled for July twenty-sixth. So I was planning on attending, but John or Mark, if you wanted to attend as well, um, you're welcome to it. I think we probably just post it to be on the safe side. And I believe that it's, um, I think it's at the middle school, tentatively. But everything is tentative right now. So as things get firmed up, I can certainly let you know what, um,
If you're going to do it, Christine, that's great. I wouldn't, I don't think we should be investing a lot of our time. We've got a lot of other things going on.
Agreed. Mark, did you have something you wanted to say?
Um, well, I'm glad to attend out of interest. Uh, our, our experience with, uh, shared services, fire departments with another nearby town, um, which is, you know, exponentially simpler than, than this. Um, you know, may give us a hint of how much work is involved. I totally agree with John. We have more than enough other stuff to deal with. And without getting too involved, um, it's interesting, be fun to see, um, how it goes. But, uh, I, I'm glad to try to attend that meeting too.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for that one. Um, so, uh, some more to come after the meeting. So revolving fund for regional assessments. Is this you too, Jason as well?
It is. I actually have, um, two articles that, that, one that the Plimpton School Committee is bringing forth and one that the Silver Lake Regional School Committee is bringing forth. Let me just speak to the one that the Plimpton School Committee is bringing forth first. You know, John and I came before the Board of Selectmen back in two thousand seventeen, um, to ask about establishing a special ed uh, reserve fund. And with the help of the Board of Selectmen and town meeting, we did establish that for our schools and our residents. In case we ever have an extraordinary cost, maybe mid-year student moves into town, has some needs. We now have a vehicle to take care of that without blowing up the budget mid-year. We're only allowed to put in two percent of what's called net school spending. It's about fifty thousand dollars at this point. And annually, we make sure that we maximize that account. We have yet to draw from it, um, since its inception in two thousand seventeen. Um, what we're looking to do and we're sending a resolution to the Mass Association of School Committees for consideration is to increase the maximum allowed in there to five percent of net school spending. So we know that special ed costs for, uh, district placements can cost anywhere between seventy and two hundred fifty thousand dollars per student in extraordinary cases. Um, so the fifty thousand dollars we have there now, if it was a mid-year move-in, we could pretty much handle any type of placement that a student might have. But then we would wipe out the fund totally and not have the ability to draw from it for the next year and the next year as we could absorb that cost into our structure. So the five percent would just give us more sustainability and flexibility. And again, this is money that we would have to put in annually, a town meeting with the consent of the citizens of Plimpton. But that's the hope of this resolution. And we, we passed this, um, on May thirty-first and are going to send it to the M E S U Resolutions Committee, uh, for their, for their view.
So do you need us to take any action on this?
No, I, I just wanted to let you know, and I wanted to thank you again for your cooperation and helping us set this up. Um, you know, when we come to establish the budget for the Denit, we're also, um, responsible for all the extraordinary special ed costs, three-year-olds, all the way up to twenty-two-year-olds in, in Plimpton, who are go out of district, comes to the Denit School Committee. That's one of the reasons why we really like people to use the proper name, the Plimpton School Committee. Cause we're in charge of more than just the Denit. So when we establish the budget every year, we can be very conservative with our numbers, knowing that we have this reserve account in case we ever have one of these extraordinary needs. So thank you very much for, for your cooperation in that.
I have a question though, Jason. I've never quite understood why, uh, school committees across the state haven't lobbied for the state to take this over at a state level.
Oh, we have, John. We have, absolutely. So what the state has established is something called the circuit breaker, which can refund by statute up to seventy-five percent of what they term extraordinary cost the year after you've spent it. So what they've decided extraordinary cost is, is four times what the average per pupil expenditure is for Plimpton. So let's say eleven thousand dollars. So after forty-four thousand dollars, they will reimburse seventy-five percent of that in a good year, the next fiscal year.
And it is that assuming they have the money or is it actually built in that?
It is subject to appropriation. And in the time that John and I have been on the committee, it has been fully funded at seventy-five percent. But just prior to John and I joining the Plimpton School Committee, there was years where it was in the fifties and the sixties, uh, which would be substantial hit again to our local budget, not just the schools, but the town itself.
Sounds like the percentage that goes to CPA kept declining over time.
It, it's a very, very analogous to that. Absolutely.
And, and yeah, John, I, I mean, it is, it, it would be a lot easier for the towns if this were just sorted at a state level. And that way, when a student moves from one town to the next town, you don't have these wild which, you know, in some districts, it's easier to absorb when it's, when you have a much larger budget. But, um, that, that would certainly be one thing. But I mean, we, you know, we, that's also the reason why if we could have an appropriate sized fund, we could much better manage that money. Because if you've noticed over the last few years, we've been really lucky in being able to, because of some work that's been done, you know, at the district level and providing more services in district, we've been able to keep costs down. Or we've been had someone come back to the district in this last budget year, which created part of that savings whereby we ended up transferring money from. You know, in years like that, if you have more room, we would, we would certainly look to put those transfers in to make sure that you had an appropriate fund to not only deal with one year's shock, but also to offset the next couple of years. Because if you think about that, if we had to absorb, you know, a hundred thousand dollar out of district placement, you know, that next year's budget, that would be a three percent increase to our budget.
True.
And I mean, that's on top of everything on, on a normal three percent. So all of a sudden we would have a six percent budget if it was only a hundred thousand or if you had two kids at that rate, you're now looking at a nine percent increase in your budget. So these numbers, we've been really lucky for the last eight years that we have, we have been able to, we've been spending less in our specialized than what was budgeted, just because things have worked out right. And it doesn't happen all the time. So.
Fingers crossed.
Hey, I, just a point of clarification. I mean, I get the point of, um, the difficulty of not knowing from year to year what the state legislature is going to do, but the CPA, um, match is back up over forty percent this year.
Good.
Yes, very good.
Very good.
So the other resolution I had was, um, one that we've talked about off and on for the past ten years since I'd been involved with Silver Lake. I believe I joined Silver Lake in the winter of two thousand fifteen. And it's the fluctuation of the assessments year in and year out. So, uh, both of these resolutions actually fall under Chapter Forty, which is municipal finance. It's not school, um, law. But we're looking to establish a regional school assessment reserve fund for years where the town might have a lower contribution, um, than previous years, like per se this year. Um, we could have put some funds aside for a year where the assessment might be upwards of five, six, seven percent. Um, since I've been on the committee, Plimpton has seen assessments as high as ten point one seven and as low as negative seven point two six. But when you average it out, Plimpton's assessment over the past ten years has been a two point six. So again, this reserve fund would allow us to level out those peaks and valleys and make it a more stable trajectory, um, that we could deal with, um, at town meeting instead of having to try and find each year in and year out, like are we going to be down seven percent or up ten percent this year? And, and we know that year is going to come, um, where we are going to get hit with that bigger assessment. And this would just again, provide us with the vehicle to save money year in and year out. And this would be something controlled purely by the town of Plimpton, not by the school committee. Um, so it would be voted a town meeting, whether or not to use this fund or add to this fund or even to create this fund. Um, but again, it's just trying to help with those peaks and valleys.
Who would be making the article to, uh, let's say, create, uh, to add to the fund? Is that coming out of the school committee or?
Uh, the way it's written, it would be, it, it looks like it would probably be a joint venture where the representatives of the Silver Lake Regional School Committee would come to the Board of Selectmen, but the Board of Selectmen would actually end up filing, um, to create that account. Because it would be under the purview of the town of Plimpton, not at all under the school.
John, my, my initial reaction, uh, when I heard about this, wearing my old finance committee hat was, you know, one of the things, the fire, at least when I was on there, and this goes back a ways, was we were reluctant, reluctant to, um, set up these stabilization type accounts. Because it took away from the budget process and we were worried about not having enough different communities enter into the discussion. I think the way you've described it, where it's entirely in Plimpton, that sounds more favorable. And I guess I'd like to think more about it as you go forward.
And please do. Um, I modeled the language after the Municipal Modernization Act of two thousand sixteen. So it's straight from Chapter Forty MGL, which is why I said it's more of a municipal, um, law change than it would be an educational law change.
Okay. Thank you, Jason.
And, and John, the way that I, I view this too, I mean, this was a perfect example this year. I mean, how much less was our, our assessment went down by what, a hundred and seventy thousand? You know, and, and so if you would even, for instance, if you, you, you come to FinCom and you talk it through, and we actually was talked through at FinCom that if something like this had been there, this would have been a year to put money in. You know, because theoretically, we got this great savings this year, but it's not going to end up being a savings at some point down the road. Because we had the perfect storm of, of, of class, class sizes being small, big class leaves, small class goes in. Everyone else has bigger classes. But in, some could argue that we should have, if this was existing, put a hundred and seventy thousand into that fund and have level funded Silver Lake. Because at some point, that's going to flip around. And all of a sudden, we're going to end up with, uh, you know, with a five or six percent increase to the Silver Lake budget based on assessments. But it's not here yet. So if we can get it, then it's another tool that we have as a savings account to earmark money, especially when the money is you seeing it in the budget process. But it would be something that would have to be worked on with Selectmen, FinCom, the school committee to make sure that it made sense in any single year. And you'd go in front of town meeting to move the money. And then you'd be in front of town meeting to use that as a funding source for, you know, another year's budget where it went up to help offset.
I, I assume that the five percent would be the, uh, the total that you could have in there at any one time.
So that would be for the Special Education Stabilization Fund, the net spending of the Plimpton School Committee. So that's a separate, that's a separate revolving fund that already is established, right? Add two percent. So we're just trying to.
But the one you're talking about at the Silver Lake.
So this one has proposed a a cap of ten, you could put in up to ten percent of the town's assessment. So for the town of Plimpton, we could have two hundred thirty eight thousand dollars.
But it wouldn't be cumulative, right? That would become the the top.
That would become the top, correct.
Next year, if if you had two twenty in there, you'd only be able to go to two thirty eight. Is that correct?
Yes, exactly. There would be a maximum fund allowance. It would also have provision in case there was any interest made on those monies that that would automatically become part of that fund as well. Um, I do have legislators who are willing to file this for me if I can get support from M A S C. And um, M A S C has already told me they've reached out to to your organization, M M A, to to try and garner some support as well.
Thank you.
Jason, so the second one, one that the Plimpton School Committee brought forward, will just be a warrant article at town meeting to change the percentage?
No, so all, both of these would require, one of them is completely new M G L, and one of them would be an amendment to current M G L. So I am going to try and get the Mass Association of School Committees to pass this as a resolution in November at their delegate assembly. And then that would give me the vehicle to go forth to the legislature um to try and get M G L changed. Then we would have the ability pursuant to whenever they pass the law to enact it as a town if we so choose. So it's a process we're at the beginning of it, but um seems to have momentum and doesn't have many detractors. Doesn't cost anybody else any money. It's it's just vehicles for us to save our own money, whether we want to or not.
Terrific. Thank you, Jason, very much. Any other question uh questions for Jason? Nothing, Mark? Okay. All right, um, Jason, are you gonna stick around for the ARPA funds discussion or?
I'm gonna stick around, but I might mute myself so I can eat a little dinner.
All right, very good. The woodwork behind you is beautiful. Oh, my goodness.
Appreciate it. I live in a log cabin. It's not a joke. Uh, it's for real.
It's it's lovely. All right, so Liz, do you wanna take the lead here with the ARPA funds?
Sure, um, let me just see about sharing my screen. Does that work?
Yep.
Okay. Um, so some of these, I guess, what basically what we're looking for is just a little direction from the board. Or sort of an acknowledgement of how we're gonna plan to proceed with some of this stuff. Um, I've been communicating back and forth with John Wilkinson in relation to Town Properties Committee. Um, and how some of this stuff looks like it's going to shake out. So. First, I think it makes sense to start with the actual funding, like what we know we're getting. So from the county, our allotment will be approximately five sixty two, seven eighty eight. So call it five hundred and sixty thousand. Um, they've currently released. Uh, around a hundred and forty one thousand of that money. Um, we're waiting for more guidance though, as far as what makes sense. Like, do we wanna put some projects into the queue now, um even if some of the remaining portion of our funds haven't been released yet? Just so we're, we have our place in line. Um, I also think it's possible. Um, with one of the projects in particular, that maybe we could start dipping into our next dispersment of funds. Um, but so that's basically what we're looking at. Um, five hundred and sixty thousand from the county in ARPA money. Then there's local ARPA money, which is sometimes referred to as NEU or non entitlement unit money. Um, for that amount, we are getting three hundred twelve thousand. Um, we have a hundred and fifty six thousand of that in hand now, sitting in an account. Um, then these other two that are highlighted, um, these are one in the same. So actually, the two fifteen, um, that's gonna go away. Um, the two hundred and fifty thousand is another dispersment of ARPA related funds. But it's coming to us in the form of a downtown recovery grant. So I'm trying to find out more about what that is. And what sort of limitations might exist as far as that particular funding source goes. Um, cause that's a large sum of money for us, so we need to get a handle on what it could be used for. Um, and I also, I think that may be coming to us in the form of an earmark. Um, a little bit different than a grant, so more to come on the two hundred and fifty number. Um, for our sake, as far as discussion this evening, I think we should plan. Not for using that right now. I think we should just kind of put that aside until we have more information. Um, and then the wrap funding, which I had put on an earlier version of the spreadsheet that I had sent out to the board. Um, this is transportation related. It's specifically for highway department for roadway, like repaving, resurfacing. That kind of thing. So we just completed the paperwork for that this morning. And um, we're expecting a notice to proceed on that sometime in July. And so that would be managed very similar to how the Highway Department manages chapter ninety money. Um, it's a reimbursement type program and we're allotted up to a hundred and fifteen thousand. Um, as far as that goes. Now, why is that on this spreadsheet? Well, from a financial planning perspective. Keep in mind that Highway um received two hundred thousand in funding from town meeting, from the capital fund. For roadway work. So there's two different ways that that you could choose to look at this. You could either say, well, there's now a hundred and fifteen thousand more in paving or roadway work. That Highway could do, or you might want to have them save a little bit from the two hundred thousand dollar. Um, capital allotment that they got at town meeting and maybe only use a certain percentage of that. And then tap into the hundred and fifteen thousand to supplement that and and save some of that money for the capital fund. So I put it on here, but we could take it off at some point if we just um don't want that to factor into any discussions. Now, as far as projects go, um, the local ARPA money, they removed a lot of the restrictions. As far as what you can use it for. Um, that said, for auditing purposes. I still think we should follow basic best practices and really only be tapping into this money for large scale projects. Um, rather than small projects like we may have done under the CARES Act. Uh, so the first one, which is one that you've already given the green light to before, is the Silver Lake H V A C project. And that would be a joint project with the three communities. Our portion was noted at around a hundred and eighty eight thousand. So call it one ninety. Um, this was one that State Representative Lenatra. Had worked at getting an earmark for this of two hundred and ten thousand. So that may bring down um the totals for all three communities. So it might be a little less than one ninety for our portion of it. Um, this one is kind of a no brainer as far as sending it through the county. And that was the project I was referring to earlier, that even though our cost share exceeds the first allotment. Of county's funds, um, I think we should put in for that one sooner rather than later. Um, and I think if it's servicing three different communities in Plymouth County, that that would make a lot of sense for them. To allow that project. Um, and for that one, it'll be Silver Lake putting together the submittal for us. We just need to work through the logistics of, you know, what's required from each of the three towns as far as paperwork. Uh, the next one is the Denit H V A C rooftop units. Um, we funded one of the, so there are six units in all that were in need of replacement. We funded one of those with CARES Act money. Um, there's another unit that we've been told State Representative Lenatra was able to secure an earmark for. Um, so that would leave four remaining units and the math on those works out to roughly a hundred and forty thousand. In total, to replace all four units. Um, that one as well seems like it would make sense to go through the county. Um, we're gonna be getting more information through Town Properties Committee on library H V A C work.
Liz, if I can just jump in, so for, I mean, one thing to remember about any of these HVAC items is that these are, these are. These are extended projects. Um, what we've been told is like for rooftop HVAC units um that are on the Denit or six months out. So, you know, you could say today to Matt Durkey, go for it, and we would be probably lucky to be putting them on in December. So, you know, this is one of those things where it's important for us to sort of plan this through and work with the county to be able to. You know, get things moving so we get the green lights and then we can go and deal with that because of the backlog there. The library HVAC, um, I believe those are probably original to the library renovation. And so again, it's one of those things that, you know, when we're looking at the county funds, we we're just trying to be thoughtful about what we're putting through there. For things that clearly fit into their parameters and then saving our local funds for sort of the broader parameters. So, you know, we're gonna get an assessment done on those units, um, but we, you know, so that's it's both to say, well, if they say they're absolutely fine and there's no issue. Then we wouldn't go ahead with that, but most likely they're there, have served their life, considering I think they're older than the ones on the Denit, so.
Um, so then townhouse pipelining, um, this is one that Harry Wyko helped helped me get some pricing on. Um, as well as Bree worked with the vendor to get pricing. Um, this project was a little bit difficult to pin down. The hope would be that if we redline the pipes in the townhouse. Um, that material wouldn't get almost like snagged on it. And we wouldn't have to keep calling a a drain company to come out and clear the pipes. Um, we haven't had that problem though recently in the townhouse, but it happens every few months. Bree keeps it on a calendar. We almost know when when it's gonna be an issue. Um, but that's definitely a project that could be worth pursuing, um, depending on how the others shake out on the priority list. Um, another one that we've been talking about is looking at the townhouse floor tiles and doing an asbestos abatement. Um, if we do the pipelining project, depending on how in depth we get with that. Um, there are different access points that they could do it from. Some of those would have really no bearing on our floor tiles. Others are a bit more invasive and there may be a need to touch the floor tiles. And in that case, we have had them tested and there is asbestos. So. Um, that's another one on the list. Would it be worthwhile to abate the asbestos? And take that on as kind of one large project. And then in the future, if we're doing any renovations or projects there. That wouldn't have to be a factor. Um, so that's another one that we have on the list. Um, townhouse generator replacement. So our current generator is very small and sometimes it's quite often. Um, we have. Of eighty thousand dollars, give or take.
You want me to, you want me to talk to this, Liz?
Why don't we mute everybody except the speaker?
Liz, why don't you mute for a sec? I can talk through this while the while the dog is. Done? Okay.
Package dropped and driver has left the premises. So the estimate we received was for eighty thousand plus or minus back in November of twenty twenty one. We did have someone come out um more recently, but they never got back to us with a quote. Um, I feel like Bree and I have spent countless hours of our days trying to chase down prices from these people. Um, nonetheless, given all the cost increases that we've seen recently. I wouldn't be surprised if it was upwards of a hundred or even up to a hundred and twenty five thousand, given the age of the building. And I'm certain that nothing would be quite as simple as as what you'd like as far as the electric work or anything like that. So, um, hopefully, that's a bit generous of an estimate, the one twenty five. But we thought it was better to be safe and put that in there.
And this falls into the same category as HVAC units. That there is a significant lead time with respect to, yes, let's go and do it, and then you wait for the generator to be available.
Um, so there's that. Then we have um townhouse entrance upgrades, including lighting, landscaping. Um, so back when we built the ramp, we had received pricing. We had it in as an alternate to fix the other entryway. Um, we have that little ramp and then that, there's that odd step that's somewhat of a trip hazard. Um, so to fix all of that, plus make the necessary upgrades at the top of the ramp, getting those doors. Um, handicap accessible so that we don't have a ramp to nowhere. Um, lighting, landscaping, and also fixing the door at the main entrance to be a sliding style. Um, possibly about fifty thousand, we're gonna get an estimate for that work. Um, but that seemed to make sense to just kind of finish off the entrance upgrades to the townhouse as a whole. Police station entrance upgrades, um, this involves the the wall issue. With um lines of sight pulling in and out of the new police station, um, entry and parking lot. Um, also looking at any potential, um, if there was a need for a traffic light or anything of that nature. Um, so we can look at getting an estimate on that, but we thought it was important to at least throw it on the list. Um, then old townhouse, um, the big room that's frequently used for Zumba and the like. Um, looking at upgrading the flooring in there.
And some of these numbers are just, they're just, um, they're numbers there just to put sort of magnitude. We have no estimates around them. Um, the good news is, is the flooring in the upstairs of the old townhouse does actually not have asbestos in it. So every so often, we get a report back that's good news. So it's really just taking up the tiles that are down there and putting a a new floor down that would be something good for the long term. And then just for the purposes of us, you know, putting things on here to think of, we we have the money appropriated at town meeting. To do the exterior work on the old townhouse. We did not appropriate anything to do the interior. So that when we would be done with the work, that back room would still be at studs, which is fine. And we not, don't wanna do anything until everything is fixed and it's watertight, but something we can consider. And I think this will be, you know, a continue evolving process by which we will look to see what funds we have available and what makes sense to move forward. You could do something with the old townhouse interior and get that sorted up. And then the other item I have on here, Denit upgrades, this is just a placeholder based on some discussions we had. Christine late last week with um the uh, the school and the police and fire chiefs. Uh, talking about any additional upgrades we need to do on top of what we're already doing as a result of money that was transferred at special town meeting. So I'm just, I just threw a number here to just make sure that that's on the radar screen. And then the last bit here is just, remember, we have three other roofs we need to deal with. So depending on where all the money comes down, it may make sense to to one or more of these. Uh, either with county or uh or local funds. Um, to be able to finish off the townhouse or to do the repairs to the existing fire station or to do a whole new roof in the library. That one's probably not because that we know is gonna be a pretty good price tag. But this obviously, anything we can do to to reduce our capital expenditures uh and utilize these funds is of course the goal.
So our plan is to contact the county and we wanna get some of these projects in the queue now. Um, and then, once we've done that or we figure out how much is reasonable. Once we've done that or we figure out how much is reasonable to get in the queue with the county. Then obviously, and I think we should work these probably through the town properties committee makes the most sense. And then I can just update the board. And you also have, I mean, John is a member of TPC and on the board, so. The board will definitely know what, what we're doing and what direction. Things are going in, but I think for some of the more moderate sized or even the smaller size. Working those through the town properties committee. I think makes the most sense at this point in time. Is there anything on the list? Well, this is an agenda item for the board to discuss. Is there anything on the list that's? Concerning or that you have questions about, or does this all seem like a solid list? And you're good with us? Kind of working some of these through.
Maybe just a comment, I understand the HVACs and the schools. It seems to me the pipelining should be a high priority and I, not having a functional generator. Is nuts and especially if there's a long queue on that, I'd be really enthusiastic about that one.
Yeah, I mean, if, if it were, I mean, as long as the county lets us do it, to me. You know, we have to work with Silver Lake for the Silver Lake one, but it would seem like Silver Lake, Denit rooftop. And the townhouse generator are all things that make sense to get in queue. I think the, the question will be as far as what the county wants or doesn't want to do with respect to projects. Or what, what requirements they have and whether the. Pipelining and abatement would fall into that or would it be, would it, is it sort of on the edges at which point we should just do that with local funds? You know, there's, we have, we have funds to do it and, and I agree with you, Mark, it, it's, it's something that needs to get done. So it's, it's all a matter of sort of getting a little more information from the county about how they want us to proceed. So that we make sure that we can maximize what, what is available to us and utilize it appropriately.
Briefly, just to better understand the process here, is, does county have a say in this or?
Yes, they, they have a very robust approval process, so it goes through multiple tiers. If it's like what it was when they first. Came up with their system, it gets vetted by a couple different private firms. To make sure that it meets all the terms of the actual legislation. Even though they loosened up the restrictions for the communities as far as the NEU money. I believe for the county money, it was debatable if the restrictions were still in place or not. So I think we're erring on the side of caution and making sure that any projects put forth to the county. Will make it through that vetting process and that they are in compliance with the original. Language of the law. So they have like a three-part process and they make sure that the project is in fact applicable. And then you get the green light on it and, and you would proceed.
Think Liz, you know, I'm comfortable with the, the projects I see because I'm on the. Town properties committee with John. What you just, just described is where it gets murky from my viewpoint. If you could outline. Sort of where the critical gates are. So that we, and I'm not saying tonight or anything, but after you meet with the county people. So that as we go forward, we know. Whether or not we're too far ahead of what they're expecting or whether we. Actually have a lot of leeway. But that would help me in terms of thinking about this.
I can do that. I think that that makes sense. The, the good part about the county process and really both processes even, so the local money that we get. There's a report online that Lisa and I both have to fill out. We each have to do something and sign off. For the federal ARPA that comes direct to the town, but that's the one that they've loosened a lot of the restrictions on. So I don't think that the reporting for that will be as in-depth. The nice part though about the county process is that I think we'd have a pretty good idea. If a project was viable or not, like before we've spent the money ideally. See with the CARES Act funding, there was a lot of like. I mean, it was COVID related, so you know, you were in the moment spending the money and then hoping to get reimbursed and luckily. You know, all of our funds were applicable expenses and we made out well in that regard, but. There is something a little scary about the thought of doing one of these large projects or signing up a contract for some of this. And obviously we'd have to go through procurement and everything, but doing some of that without knowing for certain if, if it was a. You know, a, a go from the county. So I think having a meeting with them and making sure. And also like you said, John, finding out. Where we're at in the process, how that aligns with what they have in mind. Like is this too much too soon? Or are there other towns who already have a bunch of projects on the list?
It, it does seem to me that with the CARES, I, this is kind of anecdotal that. They were going to do a audit. And that some towns that had just pushed anything they could think of through. Were now in the position of having them come back and say, we're not going to accept that. So one town I heard about was an ambulance that was bought that. They couldn't, in effect. Make a good case why that had to be. And that's where I'm a little worried that we don't want to get ahead of ourselves.
Yeah, and, and that's also why I think we're being. Kind of selective about what we're putting toward the county and making sure that it's projects that we already know fit into that. And, and there's already, there was already vetting done from an HVAC perspective for Silver Lake. And, and also to understand that even though we have a hundred and forty. Allotted to Plimpton, it is not a problem to submit for a hundred and eighty eight of our allotment. Because the project would require it. So that's sort of the, the initial focus here and, and we really have to have clarity about. What type of stuff is in and out in order to be able to manage this list? Because it may be, for instance, it may be that, you know, the HVAC works generator makes sense. And anything to do with public safety, i.e. the entrance upgrade would make sense, but. Fixing our pipes might not. And we need to also understand. Where that goes so we can, we can put things in in the right place. The other thing that Liz and I have been talking about too is that. You know, it, it, it's, we think it's going to be easier to go to the county with. Sort of larger projects and, you know, sending them seven thousand dollar bill to, to do some interior work in the building is probably not. As worth it as it is to do the big projects through the county. The, the last thing I would just like to toss out there, if, as sort of town properties. Chair is. I, I, I think it makes sense if we are going to leverage these funds. That town properties should go through the process, come up with the recommendation and then we should come back to the board. To make sure that we're all in agreement, just so that we have some level of checks and balances on these, on this type of, on these funds so that we're all in agreement.
I would agree with that.
The Denit upgrades would be a priority for me too.
Yeah, and I think we wouldn't, we would just look to local funds for that money we already have.
I think the nice thing about the HVACs is that in effect you had it validated when Kathy Lenatrick got you. You know. An earmark because that, that's what it says, this has to be done.
Yeah, and so, and you know, and, and that's why understanding sort of the, the, the. The process, like can we put in for, you know, three hundred thousand in HVAC? Or can we have to hold with the Silver Lake? Because that will help inform. Matt Durkey about whether he moves ahead with one unit on the roof because. We, when we get, when we get confirmation that that earmark in the current budget actually is passed. We have the thirty-five to go ahead and do one, so that would get us one closer. Or does he combine the whole thing and do five? You know, and that's, these are all the logistics. John, you're very familiar with it because we talked about all the time at town properties about. You know, okay, this is here and this is here. Do we have all the dominoes in the right way? So when we tap it, it all goes down at once.
One of the things Liz, you might also check, when we did the ramp, it was an earmark. And at one point they sent us a check and just said, here's the money. It'd be interesting to know how they're going to do the HVACs, whether you're going to have, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I have an email into Kathy to find that out. There was another earmark that her office. Obtained for us and that one. They wired us the money, but we had to send them a little bit of background information, like how we were planning to use it. I think the ramp though, initially they wanted us to do it almost. Similar to like a reimbursement program, but then I think because of. We wore them down and it got to the point where they just needed to get the money out the door, so.
You're a sweet talker.
So that's all I have for now on ARPA.
Okay, so that'll go back to town properties. You guys will decide prioritize these and then you'll come back to us with your recommendations?
Yeah, I think we'll come back each time when we have something that we're ready to move on. That will be the, the point, so it will be a recurring topic over, over the next year, I would guess.
Liz's blessing too.
Yeah, she's got to do the, the procurement. So is there any timeframe when this money has to be used?
Yes, it was a three-year timeframe. I want to say it's by twenty twenty-four that we have now. There was one day and then it seemed like it got extended for a certain portion of the funds, but not for all of it. And just given the lead time on some of the stuff, like for the generator, for example. Back in November of twenty twenty-one, the person told us that we were probably a year out. For them to be able to get and install the type that we would need, so. I think we want to get moving on some of this and at least get everything underway so that. On our end, the funds are kind of earmarked for different projects and we can point to some of that in our reporting. And say that we've already committed to X amount of dollars.
I, I feel there's a sense of urgency to move, even though twenty twenty-four sounds like a long way away. I just, I, I just think it's, we gotta, we need to be, if we can put the stuff into the county, I'd rather. Sort of back it up there and, and, and have it sitting there for approvals, even if we, even if they say it's approved, but you can't access it till X point. We could at least at that point, once we know it's approved. Get, get the process going for things that are six and eight months out for, for delivery. So yeah, I, I, we're going to move pretty quick, especially for the more local stuff. Where we don't have to worry about the county, then I think there's a number of those projects that we want to start executing on over the summer.
Sounds great. Okay, next item on the agenda is some appointments and these are for police officers. We've got John O'Connor as a special police officer through six thirty twenty twenty-three. So I'll make a motion that we appoint John O'Connor as a special police officer through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote. Mr. Russo? Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. All right, the, the next appointment is Timothy Johnson and I'll make a motion, we appoint Timothy Johnson. As a part-time police officer through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Second, roll call vote, Mr. Russo? Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. All right, Bree, warrants paid.
Twenty-eight thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars and sixty-five cents.
What was the biggest part of that? I'm just curious.
We paid our copiers.
Gotcha.
This is her meeting warrant article.
Perfect, okay, that makes sense. Okay, all right. So Liz, town administrators updates.
So, let's see here. So I've been working with Rob on the RAP funding that we talked about earlier. So we just got the paperwork all set for that. Earlier today. We also had a successful meeting at Denit last week to talk about. School security and some potential upgrades that might be coming down the pipeline. In addition to that, we had a department head meeting last week. And that was a nice opportunity to get all the different offices on the same page with some different things. So that was a good opportunity. We're going to be doing that the first Thursday of every month. And then we also have, starting in July, we go back. It's all budgeted for people to have the townhouse open again on Monday evening. It'll be the first Monday of the month. However, ironically, the first Monday of July is a holiday. So that one will be July eleventh and we're just going to have it posted that if the first Monday is a holiday, it'll be the second Monday. For that month, just to make it easy for people to remember. We also have here, and this is not actually in correspondence. It was just something that I heard at the department head meeting. But apparently the bike ride to Denit from the old townhouse is this Friday morning. So normally I know in the past we've done the use of town property form. I was not aware of this until it was brought up at the department head meeting. But nonetheless, they have everything ironed out, the police and highway department and fire department. So they're all set for road closure and they're going to have the motorcycle standing by and everything, so they. Sound like they are good to go on this, but I wanted to mention it this evening just so that the board was. On the same page with, with that and what's happening. And then moving on to correspondence, we did have an item that we were holding from the last meeting. That was the resignation letter from Nathaniel Sides for the finance committee. I think it makes sense at this juncture for you to formally accept said letter. But I think we should take some time to figure out what would make sense for filling that position until the next election, so. I'm not sure if you want to formally accept the letter this evening.
John or Mark, any concerns about accepting the letter?
I, I think we should so that we can start the next phase of figuring out how the finance committee is going to be organized.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion or Mark, what did you have to say?
My only concern is disappointment, but I, I don't see any reason that we shouldn't go ahead. And accept the letter.
Okay, John, did you want to make the motion or you want me to?
If you don't mind, Christine, you're better than I am.
That's not true. I'll make a motion that with regret, we accept the resignation of Nathaniel Sides as. A member of the finance committee.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes.
Oh, and I also, I forgot to mention as part of my update, but just so you're all up to speed. We had the pre-construction meeting today for the townhouse roof project. The contractor was on site as was Scott Bancroft from Habib and Associates Architects. They are experiencing some delays on getting materials and everything. But it sounds like work for that starting up. Definitely by October, but even possibly as soon as sometime in September. Once they're on site, it sounds like it's going to be a very quick job for them. And they'll definitely be all completed sometime. And they'll definitely be all completed sometime by November, most likely at the latest. So before the snow flies, that project will be done and they seemed eager to get to work. So I, I think that that project will hopefully go smoothly. We also have in correspondence, a letter here, it's a use of town property. And this is for the harbor to the bay bike ride. It's an annual bike ride. They are changing the route a little bit from in years past. And this is scheduled for Saturday, September seventeenth. They'll be in Plimpton estimated between seven thirty AM and ten AM. And it's Route fifty-eight, left onto Mayflower, right onto Brook. Left onto Spring, left onto High Street into Kingston. So they did outline that for us because it's a little bit different than in years past. They have a lot of permissions that they need to get, even something from Mass DOT as in years past. So I think they wanted to get the local level approval out of the way sooner rather than later. So if you're good with that and could vote to that effect, we'll make sure that we get all the sign offs as well from all of our other town departments.
Liz, what was that event again?
The harbor to the bay bike ride.
John or Mark, any concerns?
Uh, no.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the harbor to the bay bike ride. And what was the date on this?
Saturday, September seventeenth.
September seventeenth, provided they get all of the necessary sign offs and provide any documents that they. Need to get to the town.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. All right, anything else, Liz?
Uh, nope, that'll do it.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is the minutes from May twenty-third. John and Mark, did you get a chance to read?
They look fine to me.
I, I was kind of concerned about the Borrego section.
I was going to recommend a change to that as well, that. I would say the town would like to pursue options to protect the surrounding land from development and explore. Borrego purchasing the surrounding land and donating its town as conservation land or just development period and leave it at that.
I, I like what you said that, that I think improves it quite a bit.
Okay. All right, great. So that's just, that I could email it to you.
It's my. Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from May twenty-third. With the modification.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, Mr. Russo.
Yes.
Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy, yes. Okay. All right, we're on to selectmen's raves.
Well, I have a rave for. Our assistant Bree and Kathy Ferguson for a marvelous job they did for Memorial Day. It was just stellar, it was a beautiful day and there had to be three or four hundred people who turned out. Which was really impactful, I thought.
Yeah, exact same thing. I'd, I'd sort of forgotten how much we missed the parade for the last couple of years. Bree and Kathy and others did a great job. I was particularly impressed with the flavor of the. The parade and the ceremonies on the town green, how utterly kind of representative, typical of the town. It was incredibly Plotonian, well done.
Mine would be the same, only I would include both Mark and John. John, the young man you spoke about really made it hit home and. It was very impactful. So that was well done and Mark, you always are so good with. You know, asking for peace and calm and that's definitely your forte. And then the, the girls from the Denit were terrific. They. Gettysburg Address and Flanders Field and then the, the young girl that. Did the essay was really moving well, as well with her father being in the service and. It was, it was just, it was fantastic all around. Everything was wonderful. It couldn't have been better. So.
I thought the young lady who did the Star Spangled Banner. It was emotional, but when the Girl Scouts sitting in the front row started singing so that she would come along. That was perfect.
It was perfect. It was perfect. It was, it was a beautiful, beautiful day.
That was special. I, the little vignette and all of that as each of those young ladies. Left the microphone and went back to join the other two. They were high-fiving each other like, like young athletes. It was very sweet, very cute, very supportive of each other.
Yeah, so well done, Bree and Kathy and, and everybody. It was. It was a team effort and you, you did, you hit it out of the park. So thank you so much for that. That was wonderful. All right, so our next meeting is six twenty-seven at five forty-five and then we'll meet again on July eleventh. So I don't think we've got any additional business. That, that'll be it for today. So have a, a wonderful couple of weeks and we'll see you soon. And thank you everyone for, for coming. Good night.